It's new time.
Exactly. I'd like to call the first school committee meeting of the year to order. And our first issue is to have the pledge of allegiance, please.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So, did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes from our meeting of June 26th? And we're all set. Any comments or amendments or anything? Okay, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 26th, 2019, please? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Now I'd like to open it up for public comment, if there is any public comment at the beginning of the meeting. Okay.
No pressure.
No pressure, yes, exactly. Okay, so now we have a series of reports for the school committee, so Dr. Klingerman, would you like to start with that, please?
Thank you. It's good to see everyone, welcome back.
Thank you.
I just wanted to report on some of the things that have been happening throughout the month of August, leading into this busy first week of school. So, starting back in August, our district administrators spent two days together on August 7th and 8th to do some planning for the school year. We began with prioritizing on year one of our strategic plan, and we're beginning to develop a district improvement plan that will take some of the goals from our strategic plan and separate them into year one, two, and three. This district improvement plan that we're working on will feed our school, individual school improvement plans. The administrative team also participated in a training on how to conduct effective internal investigations led by Jean Hurdle from Safety and Respect at Work, so that was interesting and helpful. And then, next week in August, August 19th, 20th, and 21st, we had a wonderful new teacher induction program. Rita Marie Benoit, our Alden School Curriculum Supervisor, and Jim Donovan, our High School Principal, and I led the program, and we welcomed 17 new teachers. We had two Chandler teachers, four Alden, four at Ducksbury Middle School, and seven new Ducksbury High School teachers. And the teachers that are new to the district are here because of retirements or resignations from last June. So, on day one of the new teacher induction, we also held a new mentor and mentor coordinator training for the district mentors, which was led by Mary Marigan O'Brien from Teachers 21. So, our new mentor program focus is going to center around social emotional learning. And while the new mentors were being trained, we had our new staff members come in for their technology onboarding session, they got their new ID cards, and we filmed a video that was shown at convocation, which, when I'm finished, I'd like to share with you this evening that introduces all of our new staff members, so you can place a face to the names. The second day of the new teacher induction, we had a welcome back breakfast with the mentors, new teachers, and our district administrative team. This day focused on a menu of elementary and secondary activities that were helping to get the teachers ready for action on day one. So, we focused on operations, curriculum, technology, and opening of school information. On the third day of the new teacher induction, we had presentations by me, I did one, on district expectations, and rolling out our new strategic plan to the new staff, as well as familiarizing them with the tech, excuse me, the evaluation process. And then Melissa Laidlaw, who is our secondary team chair, she led a special education overview for our new staff members. We went on to have a wonderful tour of Ducksbury, led by Tony Kelso, who operates our Performing Arts Center and is also the town historian. And then, the new teachers spent a few hours with their building principals, familiarizing themselves with their new school buildings. And then, finally, convocation was last week on Monday, seems like a long time ago, now that we've had the students back for a week. But we welcomed our teaching staff back on Monday. Staff members had building-based meetings to start the day, and they finished the day with an all-district welcome, led by Dr. Antonucci and myself.
And Julia.
And Julia, yes, Julia, thank you for speaking at convocation. We then had a cookout, which was sponsored by Chartwell and led by Kelly Prince, our food services director. We had some fun music that was provided by our HR Director, Jerry Penezaganski. So, we'd like to thank Kelly Prince and her staff for their hard work, but the band was great.
What do they play, what kind of music?
All kinds.
They have a big playlist. They play, they play bars and clubs all over the place.
That's hilarious.
I got to pick a lot of the songs, so I got the playlist ahead of time. Those are all my favorite songs that Jerry Penezaganski played. And then, on Tuesday's Professional Development Day, we had department and building-based meetings in the morning, and we again came together as a district to hear a positive and encouraging message from the Speaker, Tom Murray, who's the Director of Innovation from Future Ready Schools, which is a project of the Alliance for Excellent Education in Washington DC. And he's a really renowned speaker, so we were happy to have him here in Ducksbury. We partnered with Carver and Silver Lake Public Schools in order to bring him to our district, so he did a couple of different districts on the South Shore last week, so we got some good feedback, and it was just a really encouraging start for the teachers. Students came back Wednesday, and we saw Dr. Antonucci's message, so we had a lot of smiling faces on the first day, and it's been great so far, so.
It sounds like that convocation had a real impact on the teachers from the letters you shared, that's really, really great.
Good couple of days.
I know I said this to you in an email, but, so the vision behind, we made a lot of changes to how we open up school, but credit goes to Danielle, and she sort of had the vision for how, you know, what a new format could look like, and it was just a home run, so, good job Danielle.
Thank you. A lot of work, many people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you want to show the, do you guys mind taking like?
Yeah, let's do that.
It's literally just a welcome, sort of a quick intro to our new staff.
Thanks to Dave Hagan from the Technology Department.
Hi, I'm Colleen Amars, I'm working at Chandler in Integrated and Free Kedness here.
Hi, I'm Amanda Todd, and I'll be teaching kindergarten at Chandler.
I'm Jared Collingwood, and I'm going to be teaching Spanish at Alden.
Michelle McKay, Special Ed Alden School.
I'm Jananne Dwyer, and I teach Special Education at the Alden School.
Hi, my name's Emma Corinella, and I'll be teaching kindergarten at Alden.
Hi, I'm Gabrielle Hammond, I'll be working at the middle school as the school social worker.
Hi, I'm Max Stafford, I teach Mandarin and French at Ducksbury Middle School.
Hi, everyone, my name's Ashley Sefar, and I'll be the sixth grade guidance counselor at Ducksbury Middle School.
Hi there, my name's Christy Walker, I'll be teaching eighth grade ELA at Ducksbury Middle School this year.
Hi, I'm Natalie Cohen, and I'm the new Assistant Principal at Ducksbury Middle School.
Hello, my name's Shay, I'll be teaching French at the high school this year.
Hi, I'm Sydney McChuckwee, I'm teaching at Ducksbury High School, Social Education.
Hi, I'm Priscilla Sergi, and I'm going to be teaching English at DHS. 你好，我叫张老师，我是从中国来的，我是你们的中文老师。Hi, everybody, I'm Ms. Zhang, my first name is Zhang, last name is Zhang, I'm going to be the Ducksbury High School Mandarin teacher.
Hi, I'm Lauren Bolinger, I'll be teaching English at the high school.
Hi, my name's Brittany Martin, I'll be teaching ASO.
Hi, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Ashley Morrison, and I've been here for five years, but I just recently joined the English Department, teaching French.
So, thanks to Dave Hagan for that video, but as you can see, we have a really nice new group of teachers that are bringing a lot of positive energy to the school district, so.
So, there's two Mandarin teachers?
Mm-hmm, I believe so.
One was doing Mandarin and French, and the other one's?
Point four district.
So, we have, yep, so one of the teachers that was there is doing some Mandarin and some French.
Yeah.
And then, we have the other.
And is that just due to the number of students, or?
No, we had turnover in that position. No, but we haven't, I gotta think about the budget cycles, I think we increased it by point two to last year.
Last year.
To make sure the kids could track through.
Right, okay.
Right, but the reason there are new bodies is because we had some turn, one of the teachers left, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, that was a thing.
Great, thank you very much. So, Mrs. Blake?
Good evening, everyone. So, we had a very busy and very productive summer in the business office, so some of the tasks that we were busy with were some of the new staff onboarding, so that keeps the Human Resources Department very busy. We're also very busy with the new student registration, with also the bus registration, which keeps us very busy, and we were successful in closing out fiscal year 19.
Great.
And then, we were also very busy opening up fiscal year 20, and then also preparing for fiscal year 21. So, just in summary, for fiscal year 19, we did end with a balance of $104,745, and I'll provide a detailed year-end report at the next school committee meeting, but just to give you an idea of what the balance is, the surplus, that will go back into the Special Ed Reserve Fund at next town meeting. We'll also be discussing fiscal year 20 budget tonight, and I'll be providing some additional information on the increases in some of our out-of-district tuition expenses, as well as some of the salary recast that we've done with some of the staff turnover. And for fiscal year 21, the administrative team is in the process of working on their capital budget request for fiscal year 21. And next week, we'll be rolling out the operating budget template, so that they can start working on the operating budget request for fiscal year 21. And also, at the next meeting, I will be sharing our district budget calendar for fiscal year 21, so just to give everyone an idea of kind of the timing and how we see that going throughout the year.
Great. Okay. It's great. Thank you. Okay. Our student representative not here tonight.
Doing homework, maybe.
Exactly. Okay. So, I have a few comments. I think you've all seen our calendar of meeting, of meetings for the coming year, and with a few agenda items entered in, it's a work in progress.
Yeah, as I'm looking at that, Julia, I'm not sure if the filled-out one is in there full, I'll make sure.
Did you say, maybe it's just to me? Okay, right, okay, sorry about that.
I'll send that out tomorrow, sorry.
So, we have this, and it's a work in progress, so if you have items that you would like to see on it, or issues that you'd like to have addressed, either send a request to John, or through me, or however you want to do it, but it's flexible and up for discussion at any point in the year, so please keep that in mind.
Can I just throw out, like, a Chromebook review at some point?
Yes.
Whenever you think it's mid-year.
Yeah.
You know, there's always that back to school.
Yes, so that's, that would be good. And then, as Dr. Klingerman said, I attended convocation, which was great, and the speaker the next day, which was very inspirational and fun. Also during the summer, I attended a mental health first aid workshop, which was provided by the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Task Force Coalition, and it was a professional development session that they had held here in Ducksbury in April, that I hadn't been able to go to, and some of our teachers attended, I believe. But I went to a session during the summer, it was really useful and free, so I would recommend that for any of you who are interested in mental health issues around adults or students. They have, their sessions are focused depending on who their audience is. The session I attended was primarily for adults, but they do various age groups for students as well.
And who does that?
It's the Plymouth County Suicide Prevention Coalition. And I have their contact details if you're interested.
Okay.
They're, yeah, very interesting group of people. I also attended, earlier in the summer, Ducksbury FACS Community Summit, and we, they were interested to know what types of issues they should focus their programming on this year within the community. So, having spoken with John, I suggested that they look into vaping as an issue that, where both students and parents needed a lot of information. And more recently, as you've seen in the news, there are some pretty serious problems, health problems arising from vaping, so I'm hoping that we'll be hearing from them in due course about some programming in that area. I also had a conversation with the Envision Ducksbury Planning Team around their ideas for growth, and we can talk about it more when we talk about the budget, but generally, their outlook for growth, new growth as a proportion of municipal revenue in Ducksbury is very limited over the next 20 years of the Envision Plan. And so, that supports what our Town Finance Director, his forecast in the near term are for very limited new growth contributing to revenue for the town. They also mentioned that the expansion of affordable housing is a priority, which of course may or may not have implications for the schools. So, in the news this week are two projects on Temple Street and north side of Ducksbury, where the proposal is for 250 housing units, which could be, kind of have serious implications.
On all departments?
On all departments.
Police, fire, school?
Yes. And certainly, the reports following the development in Island Creek, and near Exit 10, you know, the burden on the public safety and other departments was elevated as a result of that. So, it's something to look out for as we think about our, the school district and where we might go. We need to keep an eye on what the planning department and the various committees in town are doing. And I think that's everything from me. To any of you?
I only went, like, on vacation.
I can tell you about a lot of other things that I won't. So, yes, anybody else have things that they want to raise? Okay, over to you.
Yeah, just a couple of things. The first, and this is sort of like just-in-time information, but just so the committee knows, tonight, Boston 25, I guess the news station formerly Fox is running a story on carbon monoxide, monoxide, carbon monoxide detectors in schools. I'm not sure what their angle is, I can sure it'll be salacious. So, just so you know, and if people ask, and we'll do some outreach probably on social media, but we have carbon monoxide detectors in all of our schools. And so, in case there's panic in the streets from this news story, so we are fortunate to have them, I talked to the fire department about 5:00 tonight, and we're all good.
Great.
We responded to a kind of public records request about a month ago about whether or no we had them. Who knows where the story's coming from, but just so you know.
Okay.
Second, a real quick piece of information is, it's an invitation and notification, but the Commissioner of Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Jeff Riley, is visiting Ducksbury on October 8th. He's sort of, he's been the commissioner, this is his second year, and he was supposed to come out early last year, and there was a conflict, and so we kind of rescheduled, rescheduled, and now it's going to be October 8th. He's coming here for just a short amount of time, he'll be here from 9:40 to 10:45, I'll send this out in writing. Really just, he wants to meet with a group of students and staff, and anybody, but he'll do a presentation, the details, we're working out the details right now about the where and what location, but you're all invited, I hope you choose to attend, so October 8th, 9:40 to 10:45, so.
Great.
That's that. And then, really the final piece, I've done this, done this at the beginning of the year, the last couple of years, just really FYI on enrollment. So, school enrollment is really official on October 1st, it's just the way the state tracks it, but I'm just giving you, oh, this does, it's funny, this doesn't work, the clicker doesn't work on the TV for some reason, but I'm giving you opening day enrollment in the third column over, and I'm comparing it to June's enrollment, right, just to say what happened since the end of last year. And as you can see here, Chandler Schools down by seven kids, Alden down by 22, right on down. And I just kind of want to point out, because there's always questions about enrollment and declining enrollment, and what potential impact that might have on staffing, I thought this was an interesting, how this shook out this year. So, if you look at the middle school, that's 10 kids, right, over three grades, over multiple subject areas spread across seven periods a day, right, so you know, the drop, it's negligible, right, it's a, it's very much a nominal increase or decrease. Second thing goes to high school, right, out of almost 1,000 kids, you have a slight decrease. So, there's no opportunity really for efficiencies or staff reduction when you consider how spread out those kids are over the day. However, if you look at Alden, so we had projected this pretty well last year, and because our fifth grade class that was grad, I use the term graduate, because the fifth grade class that was graduating from Alden was much higher than the third grade class that was incoming, we knew that we had some chance for some economies. And so, if you recall, in last year's budget, we reduced a classroom teacher, right? So, 22 kids, depends where they are over three grades, but 22 kids, that could have an impact, that could have an impact at the middle school or high school. So, I just, I just wanted to kind of show you, I'm going to actually stand up, but I'm going to show you the difference. So, this is just a break, you have this in your classes, it's just class by class, the actual class count. Right now, we have 10 classes at Alden, last year, we had 11, right? So, the reason I wanted to show you this is to say, hey, we did what we said we were going to do, right, in the budget, but as enrollment is declining over the next year, two years, three years, four years, five years, we're never going to see a big, sort of a big drop in any one year. What you do when enrollment starts declining is you take it incrementally, and it's sort of, unfortunately, it kind of gets absorbed instantly, so that cut is gone. We took it in one year, it had some, provided some relief for us in the FY20 budget cycle, but we can't take that cut again, right? So, as it goes down, so I, there's a lot of, we get a lot of questions about this, about, oh, as enrollment's dropping, you're just going to, one year, you know, have a big drop. We're never going to have that. So, I just, I thought this is a great example, just to show this is actually how it happens. I'd say this too, it has implications, right? So, had we kept that teacher, we might have, we might have put that in grade four, right?
The numbers are out.
And if we put that in grade four, our class sizes might feel a little smaller, right? It would have gone to about 19 and a half instead of 21 and a half on average. So, I always, I always like to remind people, when you make a budget decision, it actually has implications, and we can see it, we can see it actually class by class. We're in great shape, I don't want to imply anything else, but I did want to show how kind of our projection came to fruition, and how our budget decision, how it actually shakes out. Real kids, real teachers, real class size, so I just wanted to show you that.
I really, I personally really appreciate that follow-up, to kind of pull it full circle, so people can understand the impact and see the numbers, and I mean, we are in good shape, but I do think, I mean, I'm actually a little bit surprised by the numbers in fourth and third grade, you know, we've got a lot of 22s and 23s up there, and that's not fantastic, it's not bad, but it's kind of on the upper end of, I think, where we all want to be for that, for that age.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly, you wouldn't want to be in the mid-20s, right?
Right.
So, you kind of, you get perilously close to, so we had, we had, over the summer.
I understand third grade had quite a number of, a large influx compared to the other grades, I think.
So, yeah, so what I was going to say is, over the summer, we had 114.
That's what my kids told me.
New registrations.
You have hundreds of new kids.
No, we also, but we don't though, right? So, we also, we also.
Where are they?
We also graduated a large class, and we brought a smaller class in, so there's always.
So, they're reflected in those numbers?
Yeah, they're reflected, right, so, but, but, you know, 114, had they all ended up in fourth, had 20 of them ended up in fourth grade, by the way, not all in the realm of possibility.
Right.
Because people tend to move to.
We're close.
They move, yeah.
We're close.
Yeah, so anyway, I just wanted to say like.
Especially in the third grade, still doing the reading thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's really interesting to see that, and I think to see it every year is nice.
Yeah. And we'll keep, we'll keep this up, we, actually, this particular spreadsheet which you have, we keep that current all year, just because we're constantly, we constantly have fluctuations, and we're constantly tracking it. And, yeah, and the one other thing I'll add about enrollment is, I don't have the detail, I'll send you the detail over the next few days probably, but at the middle school, you know, we kind of had this hot, like, a hotspot last year and the year before with the math. That's mitigated, it's not perfect, but if you remember, we made a huge curriculum change in the middle of last year, we took away that second math, remember Brandon Jocelyn and Danielle did a big presentation? That was at the same time the budget was being developed, we knew this was going to have positive implications to class size, we just hadn't really fully had that fleshed out. So, good news is that we're out of the 30s, and we're already 31s and 32s. So, the highest math class right now in grade seven is 27. We do have two classes at 27, but I take that as good news, it's a, you know, a step in the right direction. We still have a bubble, you know, in grade seven, but we have, I know it's a small, it's a small number, but there's a big difference between 31 and 32 and 27. We want it to be lower.
Right.
But so, we did, we were able to mitigate that a little bit, and that was really driven by the curriculum changes we made, and kind of shuffling the deck a little bit on classes, so.
I'm just curious, why is there a disparity in the, like, in grade three to grade four? There's like a few 19s, but then there's some 23s, when the average is like 21 and a half?
Yeah, so without having all the details about the placement, it would, it would just have to do with like the profile of the class.
The class, oh, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's it, yeah. Any questions, please, please let me know, but I just wanted to get you up to speed as of day one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other, do you want to move on to the literacy plan? Sure. This is a little short.
I have more copies of the digital literacy plan, if anyone needs one, John can pass them around. People might have it in their folder.
So, the, Ducksbury has a three-year technology plan, so last year, we embarked on developing our next three-year digital literacy plan. So, the process was, we formed the DPS Digital Literacy Committee in September of 2018, and every year, we do have a DPS Technology Committee, and so we took the current members, asked them, and then we rounded it out, we had administrators, school committee, teachers, parents, and students on the committee. We met monthly, and Danielle and I were co-chairs, with a focus on both district-level discussions and school-level discussions. And we use the updated mass digital literacy computer science standards as a guide for the process. Meantime, there were a number of us. science standards as a guide for the process. Meantime, there were a number of us on the committee that were also working on the strategic plan. So Danielle and I made sure that we closely followed the strategic plan process to ensure the compatibility of the new DPS Technology Plan with the DPS strategic goals and pillars. So it's broken up into five parts. First of all, it's, we have the new DPS mission, vision, core values, and four pillars at the front of the digital literacy plan. Then we had the DPS Technology Vision that the committee worked on, followed by the DPS Tech Plan Goal Alignment with the DPS Strategic Goals. So all year long, we were building kind of what our action plans are, were, and what our high priority items were. So in the spring, we were able to take those and then align them with the DPS strategic goals or pillars. And then we have the school, each of the schools did their own Massachusetts Digital Literacy, Literacy Computer Science Standards action plans, what were the next steps. We looked at them over the last year, and they started to figure out what they were going to do with them. But now they've made an action plan as part of the technology plan to move forward implementing those DLCS standards. And then finally, we have the DPS Technology Department's Annual Action Plan. And that's really what the tech plan has always been. Every year, we have a, an action plan, and it was developed from the state's technology plan 10 or 15 years ago, on all the different sectors of what a technology department should be doing. And we use those as an action plan each year. And you'll see that's where we highlight some of the high priority needs in those. So then we took, so the four pillars, each has kind of a goal statement about what the technology department is doing to meet the needs of the strategic plan. And then there are action items under each one of those pillars that you can see in the technology So the first one is pillar one, the DPS Technology Department will utilize technology and data resources to provide a safe and secure academic and social environment for students and staff. It is committed to treating all members of the school community with respect and dignity. So action items under there all in, focus on safety and security. We get, we had a, at the end of last year, John, Danielle, and I got a $60,000 safety grant, so that will kind of be part of it. Pillar two is, the Duxbury Technology Department recognizes the individual needs of students, and strives to ensure that all students graduate having reached their maximum potential. So all of the things that we're doing to support students in the classroom with technology and technology resources, and any special adaptive things that they need. Pillar three is, the Duxbury Technology Department will support the self-study of the district's current programs and structures with a view to expanding opportunities for our 21st century students. And we are very excited to be working on that as we expand the programs and, and structures to include more, more things that will benefit our students.
Computer science, programming, some additional offerings.
So there are some specialty areas that we can help a lot with. Pillar four, the Technology Department is committed to providing global learning opportunities that will allow students to develop an understanding of the world and global issues, a mindset that embraces diversity and multiple perspectives, and an ability to take action on issues of global and local significance. Our technology allows us to open the windows, students to the window, to the world, and, and being able to talk with people all over the world and have experiences. High priority needs that we continue to advocate for includes instructional technology coaches to improve teaching and learning in the classroom, being able to have someone work with teachers to move them along the continuum, and helping them develop curriculum. A move towards to one-to-one student devices at Alden to accommodate curricula needs and MCAS needs. The devices at Alden are seven or eight years old. The MCAS needs, they have set standards, and our operating systems in Alden, we got a, we got a pass, and they're allowed us to use the old operating system. So that's something that we're already working on, to bring devices to students that can handle the MCAS test. And then we also still need to develop a sustainable plan to replace Chandler student devices as they fail, fail, they have iPads and desktops at Alden. And we've already started working on a plan to move more devices into Chandler as well.
So for one-to-one, is that just for MCAS, not for day-to-day learning?
Um-
Or is it?
I think the hope is to be able to have, students have access to computers as they need them on a card, on a one-to-one basis.
As they, as they need them. What, they are, we're hearing from Alden teachers, they have curriculum that is partially based as, as a piece of software, as a, as a package. And most textbooks are coming that way now. You can do a lot with, they have, they have stories and, and video, it enhances the textbook. And they can, they can-
Interactive.
Interactive, and they can tailor the curriculum for each child's needs. So there's a lot that, there are a lot of benefits to that. So Alden does have quite a bit of curricula that's computer-based.
Yep.
And so from the end of March through May, they're testing for the MCAS. So those devices are used all morning long, and other teachers don't have access to them because they're not one-to-one. And those teachers also need those devices in order to get through some of their curriculum.
We don't want MCAS to interrupt the daily curriculum, and our goal is never to have our younger students on the devices more. But what we find is, because they're sharing devices at times, they aren't able to access them when it's convenient. And we want them to be able to access them when it makes sense in their day to be able to be using the computers for science. And like Cheryl said, that if they're doing MCAS testing, that really puts a halt on a lot of the curriculum programs and assessment that we do do online. So we're looking to increase them for that reason.
And our next steps to, to continue the work with the Digital Literacy Committee, remember that committee meets every year. So one thing that we need to do as a district, and they're also talking, the IT Steering Committee for the town is also saying we need a policy at the town level too, is to develop a social media policy for our teachers and students. And then we also have to think about reviewing and potentially making recommendations about ways to archive social media, because social media is a public record if they are, are using social media for the district. And so that's something we need to think about. And we also need to continue the work that we started over the last year or two on digital literacy computer science standards and getting those implemented K to 12. And you'll see in the plan, each of the schools explain how their, their action steps to implement digital literacy and computer science standards.
And the standards are split up into grade spans. So there's DLCS standards for students in grades K through 2, 3 through 5, 6 through 8, and then 9 through 12. And they're pretty intense standards that we are even asking our youngest students to implement. And so what we're doing now is just working with the teachers, without the digital literacy coaches or instructional technology coaches, to find ways to integrate that into the curriculum, so that students are doing it with, within the curriculum areas that they're already working on. So it's a work in progress.
Everyone, a question?
Sure.
Under pillar three, you mentioned trying to expand, like, computer science classes, which we've talked about for a while, because Duxbury Kids don't have them.
Right.
With the budgetary constraints, what are the, I mean, can we trade out classes? Or is it an evolution of curriculum?
Yeah, I think that the, I think that we always have to look at ways that have no budget impact to be able to continue to advance program offerings. So I think we'll certainly be looking at the program of studies at the high school to see what our enrollment is in certain courses, to see if we have any flexibility to make some of those adjustments without adding additional staff members.
Okay.
But certainly, we want to add computer science and programming opportunities. Right now, we have computer science, but it's offered as an online course, and that's something that we'd really like to have taught by an instructor, so that it's not just a self-directed online course offering for our students.
It's a gap.
Yeah, it's a huge gap.
Yeah, it's a gap. It's on our, it's obviously a priority.
Right.
Thanks.
Thank you. In the, in your action plan, you talk about crafting an annual technology budget. How far along, is that something that you've always been doing?
That's something that I've always done. So-
Right.
I do an annual budget.
Right.
I also have a six-to-seven-year budget that I'm looking ahead.
Right, okay.
So everyone, and you've probably all seen it over the years, and it's a list of things that either needs to be replaced-
Right.
-or updated, and we cross out every year. I was just working on it this morning, crossing out-
Sure.
-what I got with, I kind of saved my money. At the end of the year, I got to cross out a whole bunch of stuff on my list that didn't get funded last year. So, so I did do that.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Great, great. Because as I was reading through this, I was putting dollar signs next to everything that had a financial implication, and I thought, there are an awful lot of dollar signs in here. And I know that you've had this kind of spending-
Right.
-plan-
Right.
-rolling over every year.
Yes.
If you see, I mean, your dollar signs, it could be that it's, it's still part of our existing budget.
Of course.
And some things that might be involved.
Of course, yeah.
I think we're going to try to focus on having a really comprehensive five-year capital plan, too.
Great.
So hopefully, we can take some of those priorities, looking into the future-
Yeah.
-and incorporate that into the five-year plan.
Great, great.
Right.
Yeah.
And we've done-
It's complicated.
Quite a bit of saving, too, as well, through the tech, the VoIP phone system, we saved quite a bit of money when we moved to that. The, the Chromebooks, things like that. So we're always looking for ways to save.
Great, great. And I, under, well, page 15, under goal number four, you talked about maintaining a list of up-to-date places where students can access the internet after hours if they don't have access at home.
We maintain that on the website.
Great, okay. Okay. Anybody else have a question? No? That's great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you? Yeah, why don't we do that? I don't mind, it seems to support the technology.
Yeah. Yeah, Julie, just remind me, I totally forgot in my through the inventory report, Katie, help to support me on this. But not to point to her, I don't mean to point to Shannon, but Shannon got, came and asked a question at the June meeting about collecting fees or fines, I guess, from students for damaged computers at the end of the year. And I just, because that was in June, I just wanted to give you a quick update and some context on that, because it's a, it's a fair question to ask. But just, the, we, we ended up collecting fees from about 50 students out of about 1,700 or 1,800, so to give it some context. And we collected a total of about $5,000 in fines. And most of them were for, you know, machines that were significantly damaged. So we didn't really have any, any issues or any questions, you know, beyond, beyond here. And so I just wanted to give you a quick update on that.
Okay. Great.
So anyway, I just wanted to say that.
And then the machines that are being disposed of, would that, would we, school committee be asked to sign off on that at some point?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have, I couldn't squeeze it into this meeting, so probably next meeting, we're gonna ask you to surplus.
Right.
Because of the state procurement laws, we have to classify things as surplus.
Exactly.
And then to either dispose them or sell them. And we'll work with the town on that, so probably next meeting.
Okay, great.
Yeah. We just, we're just catching our breath from, from the summer.
Okay.
And so we're into phase two now of redeploying and disposal.
Right, great.
So I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that.
No, that, don't worry. Great, okay. Blake, would you like to talk about vocational-
Yes.
-education?
So just shortly after the April 1st deadline, last year, we had brought to your attention that we had a large number of students that had applied and been accepted to vocational education programs, primarily at South Shore Vocational High School. So tonight, I just wanted to give you an update on how that will be impacting the budget for this year, and then also give you some more information on how we're gonna cover that gap that we're seeing in the budget. So, so the, the first slide that I have, so the information on here is just giving you more background on what we had put in the original fiscal year 20 budget. So for tuition, we had budgeted for one student going to Norfolk County, and we had seven students going to South Shore VOTAC. We also included special education increments. So when the students, if they're on an individualized education plan, there is an additional charge when they're attending the vocational program. So we included that as well. So our original budget for fiscal year 20, just for tuition, we had said was going to be $147,000. And that was based on our current enrollment, a historical average. And then it did leave us a few openings for new students that we were saying were going to be our rising eighth graders going into ninth grade. For transportation, we had, it was this, a very similar process. We had said, what have we paid in the past, and what do we project that we'll be paying in the future for these students? So for Norfolk County, it's $7,400, and that's a combination of yellow bus and van transportation, because we have to transport the students to Walpole. And then for South Shore Vocational, we do contract, and the students are transported in a van. And at the time, we were paying a per-student-per-day charge to transport them to South Shore VOTAC. So that was the budget, the budget implication that we had for fiscal year 20, so that $56,000. And so what I put at the bottom as a note was, if we take the tuition and the transportation, and we just say that the average cost per student, we were, that, so just the average was going to be $29,000. So we have, I think in some of our conversation, we've kind of said it's, on average, it costs us $30,000 to be sending the students out of district to, to a vocational school. So summarizing the changes to the vocational budget since town meetings, so with our tuition. So tuition is difficult because we can't make any changes to it. It's not something that we can negotiate, nor do we have any offsets that we can apply against the tuition costs. So the tuition rates that I have provided up here, this is just based off of some of the conversation that we've had with these schools, but they're not finalized yet. So it could still fluctuate. And I had just checked as recent as two days ago to see if they have a final rate, and it's not finalized yet. So for Norfolk County, we're seeing still close to $24,000 with that one student. And then for South Shore Vocational Technical High School, we do have 17 students that were- Technical High School, we do have seventeen students that were confirmed that will be attending South Shore VOTAC this year. So the total cost is the $289,544. And then we are saying that there should be three students that have a special education increment cost, which is gonna be an additional $6,000. So our total vocational tuition right now, just based off of that estimated tuition cost for the students that we know are going to be attending those schools, is the $319,763. So of course, we have a pretty significant deficit of $172,000. So for transportation, very similar. We have one student going to Norfolk County, and that transportation cost actually decreased, because the student is only requiring partial transportation, so it's not going to be the full $74,000 that we had originally budgeted for. And then for South Shore VOTAC, we actually had worked with our, the contractor that we have our transportation with, to switch to a per-van charge. So we're being charged per van, per day, to transport the students to the school, which actually will be a significant savings for us. So if we had stayed with the per-student-per-day model, it would have been in excess of $100,000 for the transportation. But switching to that per van, per day, it's gonna keep our costs, while we're still running a deficit, it's not going to be as large of a deficit with that adjustment. And so the other point that I want to make with that is that we also still have some capacity in the vans, so that if we do have any other students, we will see an increase in the tuition costs. But we shouldn't see any increase in that transportation cost, because there's still capacity in the vans.
So they pass seventeen. How many vans?
So we have two vans.
Two vans.
And then we have, we do have some students that are, that will transport themselves.
Okay.
So we don't have to, so I think right now, we probably have three spots that are open for our transportation.
If they transport themselves, will we pay in there or not?
So the deficit with the transportation is the $74,000. So the overall deficit from what we had originally budgeted for fiscal year twenty to our known obligations is $180,000. But again, as a note, the average cost per student is lower at the $21,287, and that's because of the efficiency in switching to the per-van expense. So why the increase? We don't have any firm answers for that, but I think some of the contributing factors were, South Shore VOTAC did have, has modified their admissions policy. So in the past couple of years, they modified that, so that the non-resident students were accepted up to a certain score. So they, based off of their discipline records, their academic records, they're given a score, and then they're accepted based off of that score.
Katie, too, you vaulted. Correct me if I'm wrong, but they're also, with the modified policy, they could potentially accept non-resident students, such as Duxbury students, before they accept students from districts that are members.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So it used to be that they would admit member-town students, right? And then kind of look at, but look at non-resident, but they've changed that. So that's, that's one of the reasons that this number spiked.
And they had explained to us, too, that, so all of the member-towns are allocated a certain number of seats for their students. And previously, if one of the member-towns didn't use their seats, it would be offered to some of the other member-towns. And now, I don't believe that that's the case. I believe that that allocation does go to some of the non-member towns, depending on the student's score. And then, of course, interest in diverse programs of study. So it's of the students that are going to the vocational schools, they're not all going into the same program. So when we, when the students submit their intent to apply, they submit it with a area of study that they would be interested in pursuing. So, and I just listed some of the areas of study here, but there are a number of them across the board. And then also, one of, I think one of the major impacts is a change in the South Shore VOTAC enrollment trends. So previously, the majority of the students were in-district students. So in 2016, they had 619 in-district, and only seventeen out-of-district. And then in 2018, that number dropped to 581. So with the decrease in the in-district students, it's opening up that opportunity for some of the out-of-district towns to have more students attend their programs. So how we're funding the gap. So one of the major ways that we fund the gap in any of the increase in expenses is due to the staff turnover that we see. So in fiscal year twenty, we filled a total of eighteen vacancies that we were able to reallocate the salaries. So we had sixteen teachers and two administrators. And some of the new teachers in fiscal year twenty, that we're reallocating some of the budget, are long-term substitutes. So the reason that that's important is that we're able to reallocate that money for fiscal year twenty, because they're covering for teachers that may be taking a leave or an extended, a year-long leave. But then those teachers will come back into the budget for twenty-one. So when we project, or when we're looking at the fiscal year twenty-one operating budget, we always make sure that we're projecting on the teacher salary and not the, not the long-term substitute.
Right.
And then, so the savings in the professional salaries are used to cover our general expense deficit. So, and so the portion due to the long-term subs is thirty-five percent, so that's $61,000. And that will not carry forward to fiscal year twenty-one. And so the overall surplus that we have in fiscal year twenty is currently, for the professional salaries, is currently $183,006. So that will cover our increase in the out-of-district tuition and transportation costs. And then this is just a snapshot from, this is in one of the financial exhibits that we have in the budget. So it just shows our fiscal year twenty budget, what our revenue and grant offset is, and then what our original operating budget was, the recast amount, and then the difference.
Just to kind of put an exclamation point on that, I mean, it's another, it's good news, bad news, right? So we can reallocate and cover the deficit.
Right.
But we're effectively starting the FY21 budget process with a $180,000 deficit, right? So you have to fill the gap in the budget process. So it's nice to have a short-term fix. It's incredible. Probably lucky, actually. But it's a problem, it's a problem for FY21. We're just in the hole before we start. So, well, it's fluid, you know, we'll work it, work through with that. So, good, okay, sorry, intro.
No, that's okay. So for, again, to reiterate.
As I was saying.
Yes. So fiscal year twenty-one budget reflect the increase in the general expense due to the tuition increase. So yes, we were able to cover the deficit for this year, but we have to realize that it will have a lasting impact into future budget cycles. And then it's, I think it's also important to note that, so it was $183,000 that was the deficit for this year, and it could be $180,000 going forward if we still have the same seventeen kids, but we could get an additional.
Yeah.
So I think that's really important, because, and at this point, going based off of the historical average is not going to help us.
Right.
It's been so low. So it's just going to be very difficult to try to incorporate that into future budgets without having a huge increase. And then also, planning for the future, one of our options is to form a committee to research the possibility of joining South Shore VOTAC. So if that could potentially be an option for the district, for the town, to look into that.
Well, so Katie and I have had preliminary discussions with them. It just, it's funny, the timing of it, where we were very interested in having a discussion after Julie and I met with Randy Reed and John Adams over the summer. We were about to set, call them up and start asking questions. And honestly, like, it was almost within a day or two that they called us and said, you're interested in having a conversation. So we, Katie and I went and met over the summer with the superintendent. We're still trying to figure out, I'm not really certain of like their motivation for adding member-towns yet. We haven't had some sense. And for us, though, and this is why we need to think about this very thoughtfully, and with the representative committee, is we don't get much out of it financially, right? So it wouldn't necessarily be a huge cost savings for us, because their tuition is still X, right? We'd effectively save transportation costs, because their per-pupil cost is like an all-in number, right? So if their tuition's $17,000, that would include all of their operating costs. So there'd be, there'd be some savings. For us, what we get, though, is a seat at the table for governance, right? We would, if we ever went forward, whether we'd get a seat at the table on the school committee, so the town of Duxbury would appoint a representative. There's a lot to be discussed, such as, are there any upfront costs associated with joining? And I did mean to speak for an entire community, but I sort of told them that that was probably a nonstarter for us, within reason. I mean, it depends on what that number is. So we'll see. I would recommend that we at least continue to have dialogue, because I think it'd be great for our community long-term. It's not necessarily going to help us in next year's budget, you know, long-term, but I think it makes sense. It surprised me that we aren't a member, and it's just a kind of random, random thing. But I don't know what you guys think of that, but we'll get more information at a minimum.
Do any, is there any way to forecast, like, what student, to gauge student interest earlier on, to sort of like understand, like, whether they're leaning toward taking that direction? Do other schools do anything to?
No, I mean, so we get, we start, I mean, I gotta think about the timing. Kids start expressing interest as early as October, November, right?
October, November, yes.
So even last year, we knew, we knew that the kids, the number of kids interested was, you know, up here. But historically, kids can't even, they couldn't even get in, right? So ironically, like, it's hard to get into a vocational technical school in Massachusetts. That's actually one of the biggest complaints by public school administrators, regular K-12 district administrators. It's hard to get kids in. So we didn't learn until the summer that they had had this admissions change. So that's, so in the past, if eighteen kids applied, you know, a few might have gotten in. Now, all eighteen got in. I'm making that number up as, but just about, right? So we, so this year, we'll have a better sense, we'll have a sense, and we'll have to, we'll have to know that it's very likely that those kids will be admitted.
But did more kids apply in addition to the rules changing? Was it double maybe?
I don't want to say, yes, I have to get more information. I don't know. I don't know the history of the applications. I'll find out.
Yeah, it might be useful to hear from guidance, what their experience has been over the years with kids exploring that option, and who actually applied, and then others who may not have applied, thinking they weren't going to get in.
Yeah.
The other thing you mentioned to me the other day was that South Shore Vocational Technical School is, has its own expansion plans, which may include a new building.
Or renovation, renovation.
Renovation. So there, we need to explore what the commitment is. With becoming a member's district, there's a commitment to support that type of expenditure, as well as the operating expenditures. So.
It's possible that we would get hit with an assessment, even as a non-member district, for their project.
Really?
Yeah. So it's, again, there's a lot of stuff.
But it's well worth, it seems well worth exploring what all the implications are, and then making an informed decision, once we have all that information.
And I think just like, community-wide, there seems to be a more interest in alternative postgraduate, I mean, alternative, you know, path, pathways. So I do think it's something that's gonna, that we have to.
And that's part of our strategic plan. We have, we're planning to have a committee this year to look at if we can have some vocational offerings within our program of studies, and even have a track that would lead to some professional certifications within our current school and budget. That's something we're exploring as well.
I was gonna make a joke about opening that vocational technical school.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not a joke.
Now, Mr. Park.
So Tanner and Jess, we're the worst, okay? But you didn't get the memo that the meeting started at six tonight instead of seven, so we feel terrible.
I thought of that when they weren't here. I'm like, no, they must have.
So I take full responsibility for that. But why don't you guys, since you're here, finish your homework that you've been cool.
All right, awesome. So first thing I have on the list is that the Monday before school, the executive board, student council, put on the annual Link Day for freshman orientation. And we did it a little differently this year. We kind of put a theme with Link Day and called it the Link Fix. So we had some games, and it was a lot different than previous years, because we saw an extra level of bonding between the leaders and the freshmen, which is pretty awesome. So I think in the future, they'll probably do something like that. Another thing I had on the list was, you guys probably already know this, but the Class 2019, their gift to the class was a bridge over the drainage ditch in the parking lot. So that was installed last week. And lastly, for me, I have the open house is tomorrow for the high school, and, yeah, tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
So co-curriculars are starting back up. And last year, we did, instead of the club fair, we did like an activities video. So basically, officers of each club got to record a little segment of why you should join their club, and then it was broadcasted during iLab, and we found it was pretty successful and more effective than like a club fair. So we're gonna do that again this year, in hopes to get some more kids involved. And then also, guidance counselors last week were pretty preoccupied with getting schedules fixed. But now they're back open for, especially for seniors, for getting like college, the college process started. And I went and met with my guidance counselor. He was like, we really would like to see more kids come in, because you actually need to get a transcript form. So they're really encouraging seniors to come in and talk. And then lastly, for the seniors, our baby pictures, quotes, and like, where will you be in 20 years, is do this Friday, and you submit it to the yearbook club. And they do a really awesome job at putting it all together.
So where will you be in 20 years?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Undecided. But I think that's about it for us.
How, how do you like the Chromebooks?
Adjustment.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, they're not as, Jess and I actually talked about this, we thought we were gonna get the question. They're not as bad as I thought they were gonna be.
You were all over the Macs last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. One thing is, just transitioning with them, like, it's taking us twice as long to do something we can do on our Mac. But over time, we'll figure that out.
Yeah, I think there comes like a lot of frustration at first, when you're trying to do a five-minute assignment, but then it takes 10 minutes, because you don't know how to upload a picture. So it's kind of just... So it's kind of just working out those issues and learning the new system, which is just going to take time. But I think kids right now are like, ooh, it really would be nice to have those Macs, but it's just going to take time. That's what it comes down to. But they're nice otherwise. Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, and we're sorry, I'm sorry.
No, sorry.
Six o'clock start.
Yeah, I know, six o'clock from now on.
Okay, um, would you like to talk about the Blizzard?
Sure, yeah, so, uh, what we call Blizzard bags is notion of alternatives, um, school days, alternative structured learning days. So last year, if you recall, we rolled out this, this Blizzard bag program, which allowed us to, uh, assign work to students on days within climate weather. And upon successful completion of those assignments, kids were marked in attendance. And so what that meant is that we didn't have to make up the day at the end of the year. I'll say this, for many initiatives and ideas that we've implemented over, you know, a twenty-plus-year career, that one actually worked well, like, it actually did. And there was, I, not, I'm sure nothing's universal in public education, but it was universally, uh, well-liked, you know, by people. It just made sense in a lot of different ways. And what I would say is it worked for Duxbury, right? And that's important to say, okay? We had the resources, we had the structures in place to make it happen and make it happen well, right? So I, I, I say that. Unfortunately, um, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education got involved. And I had heard through the grapevine last spring that there were some rumblings that they were going to start reviewing it. And I sadly predicted what exactly happened, which is after reviewing it, they decided that they're no longer allowed for districts. And so they put an advisory out, which you have this summer. And there, there are points, and they, and I, I spoke with them, ASS, um, yesterday, Math Association of Schools Superintendent's, and, um, just to get a sense of what their position was. For years, I sat on that executive committee, so I was kind of more in the know, but I wanted to get a, because I, I kind of know how things work behind the scenes there. And, and not surprisingly, they did push back on DESE and forced DESE to at least put a committee together to, to study it. And that committee's referenced in this advisory. But I think it was dead in the water before, before it even started. And so the outcome of that committee, even after all the input, was that it was no longer allowed. DESE's argument is that, and the argument from, I guess, some other interest groups too, is that equitable access for students was a major concern. And I'm, I'm with them on that, I am, right? But that's not our concern here in Duxbury, right? We talked that through, we made sure, even how we ruled it out, that technology wasn't an issue. That timing of having parental support at home wasn't an issue, we gave them two weeks to complete this, right? We, we had those very difficult conversations over the course of a year, as we planned it. But that was what they settled on. And so my issue is, and, and the Department of Ed's not surprised, I, I've been badgering them with this for, for almost twenty years, is they continue to, um, make one-size-fits-all decisions. They continue to implement regulations that are one-size-fits-all. You know, it drives me crazy. And so I don't mean to vent, I don't want to make this a therapy session for me, but, uh, it kind of, we are where we are right now, right? And so the program is effectively over, uh, at least for the time being. I, I can't predict if that'll ever change. But in the advisory, they said that if we have an approved plan in a, in a community that we can, we can continue, um, to implement it for another year. I would strongly recommend, if, if, if there's interest, um, on the committee at least, that we, we try it for another year. You know, and maybe, maybe something changes, you know, with the regulation of policy that allows us to have it long-term. But at, at least we wouldn't have kind of a break and we can kind of continue to see, you know, continue to see how it works out for us. So anyway, that, that's my recommendation. I've actually been talking to, um, Josh Culler about it. And Josh has been having conversations out of his office with the Department of Ed to get it, just to push back a little bit. And, um, I'm really, I'm really happy he's doing that.
Yep, we have Commissioner Riley visiting Duxbury on October. So we might want to just mention to him, if we have an opportunity, that we had a successful alternative learning program here in Duxbury, and we're disappointed to hear that it's no longer going to be a town-by-town decision.
Right.
If we have something that's working, so.
Yes, nine forty on October eighth.
Yeah, nine forty-one, we'll tell him.
So anyway, I mean, again, I, I'm more frustrated that just, that is just how the state has been operating for so long, that they just make, they make blank, they make one-size-fits-all regulations. And it, and it frustrates me in Duxbury, because we, we are fortunate in this town. And we know our community, we know our students, we know what our capacity is to get things done. And the individual needs of the community aren't taken into account many times. So again, I've been beating that drum for years, I'm clearly not getting it, but, uh, just another thing, so. Anyway, that, it, so I don't, I don't know what you think, I would love to, I would love to have it in our toolbox this year, but long-term, I don't, I don't think it's going to be sustained, so.
Well, I think there's a lot of community support for it, so I'd like to see it continue this year. It's supposed to be a really bad winter.
Yeah, it's just about to say, that's what I refer to. I'm making a big, you're going to have it.
Senior.
Yeah.
I know, senior.
Yeah.
One week off in March.
Oh, I know, I know.
That's it?
Yeah.
I know that's unpopular.
I know. Well, you know what's on them, you know what the issue is? So in the advisory from the Department of Education, they recommend, uh, two things. One is, um, you know, recommending to districts that they start before Labor Day, which, which we already do. Second thing is recommending that instead of having a February, an April vacation, that you have a consolidated one week in March, which I, I love that idea. The problem is unless everybody does it, it's really not a viable option for students. Just consider staff alone, right? So we have over four hundred employees. And so if we're taking off March, and every community around us in twenty square miles is taking off February and April, it really, really puts a burden on families.
Yeah.
That alone makes it a tough option. And historically, people have looked at it in sports schedules and all those things. But, uh, yeah, I, I, I would love that to happen, but you, you gotta, you gotta go all in or not, right now. So, all right, so I, I mean, that's the update. And it's not, it's not the end of the world or anything, I just, it was such a really nice thing for the, for us as a community and, you know? Easy come, easy go.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, uh, then we have two action items on the agenda. Both are approvals of overnight travel proposals. So we have, the first one is for the middle school, um, doing the, this current iteration of Nature's Classroom at Camp Cody in, in New Hampshire. And then the second one is the Holocaust Washington, D.C. trip, um, from Mrs. Sullivan. So any conversations you want to have about either of those?
I think they're both great trips.
I liked that, um, Mr. Bar had put the cost per student on the proposal. So I'd like to see that from when, whenever we get a memo asking for approval that we have a cost per student.
They both do, actually.
Yeah, you gotta go all the way down on the high school one.
Oh.
It is nice to have it up at the front.
More than like subsequent pages.
Oh, I didn't get far enough.
The last page.
Oh, so, okay, okay, that's maybe, so later.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
It is, it is nice, but the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right. Okay. So, um, may I have a, um, motion to approve the, uh, proposal for the trip to Camp Cody by Duxbury Middle School?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And then may I have a motion to approve the proposal for overnight travel to Washington, D.C. for the Holocaust trip?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. That's all done. Any other issues we want to raise?
No, I, I think it was a great start to the school year. I have a middle schooler now, I'm loving it. Everything's wonderful, the new assistant principal is wonderful, you know, it's, it's just nice. I mean, everybody does a good job, the Web Day leaders and the Link leaders. We're doing it right?
Good transition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like this year was really smooth.
Yeah, not, but, yeah. But, you know, that is, that actually, we were talking about this today, that is the consensus, it's been a really, really nice start. I think we have a lot of people who plays, and, uh, so hopefully it stays that way.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, and I don't know, last, at the end of last year, you had talked about the Wellness Advisory Council needing a school committee member. So I just wanted to raise that again to the committee, and anybody would like to participate?
So we, last year, we met on Mondays at three-thirty here at Alden, but we haven't established our schedule yet this year. So if there's a particular day that's great for you, I can throw that out there. But there's generally four to five meetings a year, so it's not every single month.
Right. Interest?
I could do Mondays. I don't know yet, I'm on a few, so, I guess that's what it is.
Yeah, so when we set the dates, I'll share the dates with the whole committee, and if one of you can pick that up, that would be great.
It'd be great to hook somebody on that. Are there any other committees you need a school committee person on?
The committees that we're running this year are a social and emotional learning committee to plan for our January PD Day, which will be menu-based, um, all social emotional learning activities. Our district curriculum committee this year is focusing on writing, reading, and world language as the topics up for review. So we also talked about having some school committee presentations by students from the different schools in those areas throughout the year. We will continue to have the, um, internal dyslexia committee, which will have a meeting to report out some of the findings from that and recommendations. And the digital literacy, um, committee will certainly need a, a school committee representative, because we'll be working on that social media policy development. And other than that, I think that might be it for the year.
Okay, well, if you could keep us up to date, and when you have meeting schedules.
I'll share them.
Share them, and then we can make sure we've got somebody. I mean, even, we could do trade-off between two or three members, just to make sure somebody's participating would be useful. Okay. Right, now, time for a public comment? Okay, well, um, the absence of public comment, uh, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Zach, guys, that was quick.
The new one? She's good, she, uh...